Okay, I think we are now ready to come to order and reconvene our open session. We will start by having our clerk read the actions taken in closed session.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. On the six to one vote with trustee Jay casting the negative vote, the board voted to affirm the district's recommendation to non-reelect two faculty members at Saddleback College and to reject the recommendation to non-reelect two faculty members at Irvine Valley College.
Okay, go ahead.
On a seven to zero vote, the board voted to reject a classified employee's appeal of an administrative determination that her complaint alleges discrimination was without merit. On a seven to zero vote, the board denied the request for a paid leave with benefits of a police officer. On a seven to zero vote, the board approved a six-month extension of a previously approved three-month unpaid leave with benefits to a classified employee. On a seven to zero vote, the board voted to approve the termination of employment of a faculty member.
That's it?
That's what I have, that's it.
That's it, all right. Thank you very much. And we will now have invocation led by trustee Lang. Please rise.
Thank you. We give thanks for our many blessings and ask for wisdom in our deliberations on behalf of the good citizens of South Orange County Community College District. Particularly ask for protections for the men and women in our armed forces who represent us at home and abroad and protect the many liberties that we all enjoy. We also ask for protection for those in the fire, police, and other social services who risk their lives on a daily basis to help maintain our safety at home. In this we say and in this we pray. Amen.
All right, thank you. And trustee Jim Wright will lead us in the pledge.
Please follow me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and we now are at resolutions, and we have two. So, one from Irvine Valley. You're going to present that, President Rockmore? Yes, sir? Who's going to present that? Preston Metzger, you got the resolution?
Oh, yes, yes.
Yeah, he's got it.
Okay, whereas, you ready? Okay, whereas the 2012-2013 Irvine Valley College Lasers Women Golf Team had an extraordinary season culminating in the college's 16th state championship and women's golf second-team championship by defeating Glendale Canyada and San Joaquin Delta Colleges with a two-day total of 628 at Los Serranos Country Club. And whereas the Lasers recorded the school's first undefeated season, winning two tournaments along with eight Orange Empire Conference matches, the conference finals, and Southern California Regionals. And whereas the team recorded its second-ever team regional championship, defeating five other colleges en route to posting a 624 team score in its sixth regional appearance in the last eight years. And whereas players Sally Kim, Kate Cho, Holly Young, and Vanessa Hones earned first-team All-Conference honors, and Taylor Shuiki and Cheyana Sam were chosen second-team All-Conference. And whereas Sally Kim and Kate Cho were named the co-conference Players of the Year and also learned All-State Team honors. And whereas the team was coached by Ben Burnett, who was named the Orange Empire Conference Coach of the Year for the sixth time in the last nine years while collecting his fifth OEC title. Therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees and the Chancellor of the South Orange County Community College District do hereby commend and congratulate the 2012 and 2013 Irvine Valley College Women's Golf Team members Kate Cho, Kristin Inomoto, Toni Hones, Vanessa Hones, Sally Kim, Cheyana Sam, Taylor Shuiki, and Holly Young, head coach Ben Burnett, and assistant coaches Mark Flippin and Alan O'Chee for their outstanding athletic season and excellent representation of Irvine Valley College.
Okay, we have to pause for just a minute and take a vote. You want to call the roll? Trustee Jay. Trustee Jay.
Aye.
Trustee Jamal.
Aye.
Trustee Lynn.
Aye.
Trustee Padberg.
Aye.
Trustee Prendergast.
Aye.
Trustee Wright.
Aye.
Student trustee Park. Congratulations.
And if I can, I would like to ask Coach Burnett to say a few words.
Sure.
Two years ago, the ladies for Irvine Valley College won their first state championship, California State Championship, by rallying from third place to first place on the final day and become the best team in the state of California. These ladies, this year, so dominated women's golf that they rightfully have the title and the reputation as the best women's golf team in the United States. And they have the attention of the LPGA Tour Commissioner, and thank you very much for recognizing their amazing season and the leadership and the accomplishment. Thank you very much.
Would you like, excuse me, Coach, would you like to introduce your girls real quickly?
Certainly, starting at my left is Vanessa Hones, her sister Toni Hones, Taylor Shuiki, Sally Kim, All-State, and co-captain Holly Young.
Great, thank you. Our trustee, President Burnett.
That's a nice title, I like that, thank you, Madam President and Board of Trustees guests. Very happy to introduce to everybody our 2012 President's Award for Leadership and Innovation. And I've asked Dr. Cosgrove, our president of our Academic Senate, and Don Minio, president of our Classified Senate, to come up and help to congratulate and present the 2012 awardees, which were given out actually in January. First, for our full-time faculty, unfortunately she's ill tonight and wasn't able to make it, and that's Renee Bangrider. And Renee co-chairs the English Professional Learning Council through which she established a partnership with high school teachers from the Capistrano, Saddleback Valley, and Laguna Beach Unified School Districts. The council partnered with Turnitin.com to write six Common Core rubrics that are now used by, I believe it's roughly 70 percent of all K-12 teachers throughout the nation. So, quite deserving, and I'm sorry she couldn't be here tonight. But the rest of them, I believe, are here. And our next full-time faculty recipient of this year's Leadership and Innovation Award is Kim Branch Stewart. Kim, come on up. Kim led human services faculty in identifying core courses needed by all human services students and encouraged students to complete those courses, which has increased student readiness, along with the number of students completing certificates, and has aided students in completing multiple human services certificates. Congratulations, Kim.
Thank you so much.
Our associate faculty, we actually have two this year, and the first one is Abigail Astley. Congratulations, Abigail. Abigail proposed and piloted a new Applied Psychology I course for international students, helping them through the matriculation process in creating their academic plans. The class provides information to international students about various aspects of the U.S. educational system and the campus resources that are available to them. Congratulations. Our second associate faculty is Brock Shermerhorn. Come on up, Brock. Brock is commended for helping to elevate Saddleback's real estate program as one of the top-two programs in the state. His successful outreach efforts have focused in part on newly discharged veterans at Camp Pendleton who have pursued careers in real estate after earning their certificates and degrees at Saddleback. Next, we have our manager and administrator Leadership and Innovation Award recipient. In this year, it's Classified Manager Christian Alvarado. Christian, come on up. In Chris's short tenure, he's only been with us for a year and a half, he has transformed the slow, paper-heavy financial aid process into an efficient automated system. The process for rewarding financial aid used to take three months for our students, but now, under Chris's leadership, awards are approved in 30 days or less. Congratulations. I know she was here earlier, is Debbie Armstrong here? Deborah? Did she meet? Maybe she had to leave, sorry about that, Deborah. But Deborah is one of our, we have two Classified Staff recipients, and through Deborah's collaborative efforts, and while library faculty were mostly off-site, Deborah overcame several challenges to reopen the library in its new location in the Learning Resource Center on the first day of fall semester classes. In very limited time, she found solutions to shelve the textbook collection, ensured that all technology was up and running. Thank you, Deborah. Our next Classified Staff recipient is Donna Priville. Donna, come on up. Donna is commended for moving the college brand forward by creating high-quality graphic design work that is seen throughout our college campus and community in the form of banners, printed marketing materials, website design work, special event pieces, and other marketing collateral. Congratulations and thank you, Donna. Finally, this year's part-time Classified Staff recipient is John Ginnity. John, come on up. Over the past year, John worked extensively with Keenan and Associates to develop safety standards for the college's art programs, and has been instrumental in coordinating several activities that bring the community to our campus, including the Print Making Steam Roller Party, Happening Unhappening, the Veterans Chili Bowl fundraiser, and the Student Holiday Art Sale. So, ladies and gentlemen, it's going to be a great pleasure to introduce again the entire recipients of this year's 2012 Leadership and Innovation Awards.
Were there any public comments? Are there any? Thank you, all right. And before we go on to reports, I'm going to just let everyone know that we are pulling item 5.11. And we will be putting item 6.1 ahead of the discussion items, so after we finish our reports, we will start with item 6.1. So, we'll go to board reports, starting with trustee Jay.
Yes, two things that I'd like to mention. One was congratulations to the Lasers girls golf team who won the state championship, of course, in the community college ranks this spring, and this was marvelous. Secondly, all we do when we get together in these board meetings is figure out ways to spend money. So, I'd like to mention that as you go through the agenda tonight, one thing that will really strike you in item 6.6 is that the Irvine Valley management reorganization has resulted in a fiscal impact of a budgetary savings of $117,000 per year. So, I think that they deserve some recognition. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Trustee Jamal.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam President. It was a pretty active month for me at the colleges. I thanked the Presidents, Burnett and Rockmore, for the, I completed the tour of Saddleback College and had a tour of Irvine Valley College. I thank you both for your hospitality. I saw a lot of wonderful learning environments taking place. I saw the Learning Resource Center and hope to attend the opening. I guess it's on Thursday, I hope to be there. Attended with trustee Wright a workshop in Sacramento to try to teach us how to be good trustees, so we'll see how well that workshop is employed over the next few months. I thought it was worthwhile attending. Attended an Audit Committee meeting, and I actually attended a short briefing in Washington, DC, last week for the American Association of Community College Trustees. And one of the things that strikes me about what's going on, and I think you've heard, I've talked about it a little bit in the past, is this desire to really use community college as the engine for economic development and job creation and job training. And I think we're seeing legislation that's moving forward at the state level and in Washington, DC, and the state chancellor touched on it quite a bit in his briefing, and I had a chance to speak with him a little bit privately about it. I think these colleges, including ATEP, are well-positioned. I feel, I felt that way before I was elected, and I'm still reinforced in that position going forward. There are some, there is a skills gap in this country. There's 2 million jobs that are vacant because they don't, employers can't find the right people with the right education, the right training, and the right skills. And of the 2 million nationwide, some 300,000 are in the IT sector, and that's a hub of our region here in Orange County. And our colleges are positioned. I know we have a great learning environment, and I think we will even get ahead of legislation, hopefully, because we like to stay ahead of what people are doing in Washington and Sacramento. And when they do follow our lead, we're ready to take advantage of it. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, trustee Jamal, just to let you know, if you would talk to our Information Officer, she has some documentation that greatly supports and shows the economic influence of community colleges. Okay, so next is trustee Metzger.
Yes, and I also echo what trustee Padberg and trustee Jamal have said about our economic, how we influence the economic growth and development of our communities. The community colleges are so important, and it's nice to hear trustee Jamal's excitement, and it makes me excited again, too, which is really a good feeling about what our colleges can do for our communities and for our students. I just wanted to mention that a few weeks ago, I attended the Community College League of California Annual Ledge Conference, and I did this in my role as our representative to the Orange County Community College Legislative Task Force. Also, Chancellor Portner attended with me, and our Government Relations Director, Terry Flugman, attended it with me. And it was very valuable, and we met with 16 legislators, so it was a very busy time, and we carried the message of what we've done in our Orange County Community College Legislative Task Force in our having programs for veterans, and also what we proposed that we could do for our communities, and we brought the outcomes from our socioeconomic study. And what I told these legislators, is what I always tell legislators, is that the community college students come from your community and return to your community with the value added of a community college education. So, this is something well worth our legislators investing in, and legislators from all political parties feel the importance of the community colleges now. So, this is a great place to be. And we did discuss with the 16 different legislators some of our concerns with the education proposals, and we urged them to allow the recommendations of the Student Success Task Force to be implemented before they actually put any more reforms on our community colleges. So, we're there with our voice to our legislators, and they were listening. It was very, very valuable a meeting. Thank you.
Trustee TJ Pinteres.
Yeah, as trustee Jamal said, very busy month. Way back when, attended the Invention Convention, again, that was exciting as usual. The President's Cup basketball game, the second, congratulations to Saddleback for recovering the cup, as I think you put it. I also was invited and represented the district at the California Community College Association Dinner. They had a panel discussion, and I was on the panel answering questions regarding communications between faculty associations and classified associations and trustees, and how that works. And you guys, we are all very happy to know that a lot of other districts out there are very jealous of the relationship that Saddleback, the South Orange County Community College District, with Saddleback, IVC, and ATEP have between the faculty, the classified, the administration, the trustees, all along the board. It was very well-received, a lot of compliments for this district for the relationships that we all have with each other, and that's very, very positive. Also was able to attend, my daughter is taking early college courses through Beckman High School, and she's, one of her classes is music appreciation, and so her professor had her, they have to attend some concerts, so she drug me to the Rufus Choi Piano Concert, which I will be honest, never, ever would have gone to on my own, but I'm glad I did. It was very, very impressive, and I will probably be attending more events with her in the future and gaining my own music appreciation. At least I don't have to write the papers. Anyway, and then, yeah, and then there's the upcoming concert this Friday with Beckman High School. So, that will be a very interesting event if we can make it over there after our swim meet. And then, I just wanted to mention, President Burnett talked about the Turnitin.com with the Common Core. After the presentation we got here at that board meeting, I shared that with our English Department at Beckman High School, and they are one of the 7 percent that are using it. So, I thought you'd like to know that.
All right, thank you very much. And it was a very busy month. I went to Astounding Inventions at IVC. I was participating in the Audit Committee meeting and the Orange County School Board's Dinner. And of course, the President's Cup held, the one last game held at Saddleback, which thankfully was in honor of the memory of my husband and the benefit to a scholarship in his name. And between that and other donations, we were able to raise about $15,000 for a perpetual scholarship in his name. So, thank you very much. Trustee Wright.
I had a fairly busy month also. I attended this Effective Trustee Workshop meeting up in Sacramento that trustee Tim Jamal referred to. There were several of us there. We had a number of workshops on how to be effective trustees, such things as introduction to our roles and responsibilities, faculty, staff, and student roles and local decision-making, trustees' financial responsibilities, and so forth. Very worthwhile. Also, I attended the Orange County School Board Association. They had a reception for new trustees, I attended that. And then also, the joint dinner, we had that same evening, and that was with the Orange County School Board Association and also the Association of California School Administrators. This was held at the Irvine Marriott, so that was very much worthwhile. Also, I had the occasion to attend two basketball games. Saddleback College played Riverside City College, won, this was last Wednesday, and on Friday, I attended the Irvine Valley basketball game, and they won, Irvine Valley beat the same team, Riverside City Community College. And then I'm looking forward then to attending the Open House and the reception that we're having this Thursday. I think it's the Thursday, February the 28th, it's at 3:00 in the afternoon. This is the Open House and Reception to celebrate the reopening of the Saddleback College Library and Learning Resource Center.
Great, thank you. Trustee Lang.
Yes, given the lateness of our start tonight, I'll not have a board report tonight.
Trustee Park.
I was able to attend IVC's Club Day, which I thought was very well-organized, and I didn't get to make it to IVC's homecoming game, but I heard they had a surplus of hotdogs, so that's pretty cool. I've been speaking to the other California student trustees a lot, and we're having our teleconference the first week of March. Congratulations again to the golf team, I think they all left, but I have so much respect for student athletes. And lastly, for everyone who hasn't gotten their free shot yet, I recommend it, because this year's is a winner.
Thank you very much. Chancellor's report.
I'd like to call attention to a few items that are on the agenda tonight. First, there's a couple of discussion items that we're going to be hearing. First one, 4.1 is on, related to student success, and it's improving the education of basic skills students. The second is a report requested by trustee Jamal on mental health services at our colleges. And the third item is coming up soon. It was just announced it was going to be advanced, is action item 6.1, and it has to do with lease leaseback strategies for construction, which is one of the ways we've been trying to get more control over our construction contracting. And I think that Director Delaina will tell you that so far it's been working very well.
Okay, we're now at our college president's reports. President Rockmore. And President Burnett. Looks like it's going to be a combined report, I don't know.
Thank you, President Padberg. Saddleback had the opportunity to give out some awards tonight. We give ours out, actually, in the fall end service, and so what I want to do is take my president's report tonight and recognize those that are still here that did receive awards last fall. I'll make it very short here. For excellent contributions to student completion through the development and enhancement of student learning centers, Dr. Craig Justice, if you'd come on up. For excellence in building a culture of mutual respect and participation among classified staff, Dennis Gordon. For tireless efforts in improving technology and customer service, Bruce Hagan, he had to step out, he's one of our managers. For extraordinary work in developing the engineering program, and there'll be three full-time faculty that received this award, Matt Wolken, who is teaching right now, Ilkner Erebus White, who is teaching at this moment, but we do have Rupa Mather here tonight for that award. And then finally, I don't see her, probably due to the late hour, but Melody Harper for devotion to students and boundless energy while serving them. And so that's our line of president's award recipients as of last fall.
Great, thank you. President Burnett.
Thank you, congratulations, IVC recipients. I have four items tonight for my report. First, was already alluded to, this Thursday is our Open House and Reception to celebrate the reopening of the Saddleback College Learning Library and Learning Resource Center. And we're going to highlight the three divisions that are housed there, Division of Liberal Arts, Division of Online Education and Learning Resources, and Division of, part of the Division of Fine Arts and Media Technology. It starts at 3:00, it goes to 5:00 PM. The first program event will start at 3:30, and we'll have lots of good refreshments there as well. So, I encourage everybody in the audience, everybody in the community, and certainly our Board of Trustees and Chancellor and everybody else to please attend. It'll be a wonderful event. Second, I wanted to thank IVC and President Glenn Rockmore for another exciting President's Cup, and as trustee Prendergast had said, it is nice to have the cup back since it's been over two years. So, it was a wonderful, exciting night, and thanks to everybody who helped support that evening the Tom Padberg Scholarship Endowment, as trustee Padberg had mentioned. Also want to say that our men's basketball actually is undefeated in conference, and they took obviously the conference championship. They are now seeded number one for the playoffs and will play this next Saturday, depending on who wins the game that's on Wednesday night. And that will be here at Saddleback College at 7:00 PM. We're also very proud to say that our women's team actually had a very strong finish, and they ended up, even though they placed fourth, they were the wild card. And so they are in the playoffs as well, and they're playing on Wednesday night, unfortunately a little far away down at Palomar College. So, we're wishing them luck as well. Hopefully, it would be great to have two state champions, wouldn't it? Third, I wanted to say to you, you may have already heard, that we, the Accrediting Commission actually accepted our follow-up report, which was very wonderful. Thanks again to the district services. Thanks again to the district services. But I also want to thank our accreditation steering committee, which is led by our two co-chairs, Dr. Don Boucher and Dr. Bob Cosgrove, and Professor Claire Cesaro Silva, who actually did most of the writing on the report. So just congratulations to us all and we're on to the midterm. Finally, tonight, you're gonna be hearing from Jenny Harris Caldwell, who's our director of our Health Center, and also IVC regarding mental health issues and services provided at our two colleges. You may know about the tragic events last week that surrounded one of our part-time students, unfortunately. This highlights the grave importance of the mental health support services that we provide at our colleges and in our district. I wanted to thank trustee Jamal for actually requesting this report be brought forward last month. It is very timely. This last August, those of you may recall that I identified in my top 10 projects that alcohol and drug abuse, which is an issue that plagues our community, was one of my top 10 projects for the year. And as you know, there's a strong correlation between mental health issues and alcohol and drug abuse. So I am pleased that tonight Jenny and her team and the many people at our college have been working on this over the last several months, actually, and will be presenting tonight many of the things that we are doing and we plan to do to deal with this very important issue. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We are now at board requests for reports and we have one request submitted by, I believe, trustee Wright. Would you like to comment?
This is a, is a report, if you'll notice, in looking at the report.
Request.
Request. It's a request for a report on the progress of the veteran services provided by both colleges. It was about a year ago that we had a report. And I know there's been a lot done since the last, since the last year. And so I would just like a request that we have another.
All right. Do I hear a motion to support this request? Trustee Lang, second?
Second.
Second by trustee Jamal. All right, let's vote. Everyone push button. Okay, we're not registering the vote.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't see it on mine. Oh, there it is. All right. It carries unanimously. All right. All right, very good. And we are now at what would be discussion items, but we're advancing 6.1, which is adoption of Resolution Number 13-04, authorizing the execution of delivery of lease leaseback contracts and filing of a validation action for the Saddleback College Science Building. Brandy Delena, you wanna come forward?
If I may.
Oh, I'm sorry, Vice Chancellor Fitzsimmons, go ahead.
I just wanna, Brandy, for, I just wanted to provide the framework.
Sure.
To put this item in. You know, Brandy's, I was, I'm sorry. I'm very.
Okay, go ahead.
Basically, you have to, you have a large, sizable item. And it's regarding the lease leaseback of the Saddleback College Science Building project. And our lawyers have stated that it had to be presented to you in this way, which is very technical, so that we precisely follow the ed code and so that we are not subject to any litigation. Or otherwise, we try to make a little bit more user-friendly or simpler for you, but we revise naught to. So with that, what we wanted to do is make sure you understood what the action being requested of you is, is. And that is to approve a resolution that authorizes you to do a few things. One is to file validation action for the lease leaseback process. And Brandy will get into what that validation action is. To approve the lease leaseback process itself. And to approve to form three agreements, the lease, the leaseback docs and the construction services agreements. Now what happens is the next steps are that we negotiate the gross maximum price, and Brandy will explain what that is. And then finalize the three agreements, which we will then bring back in final form, like we do all of our other major agreements, to the board for your review and approval. So if you're wondering why there was agreements attached and didn't have all the i's dotted and t's crossed, that's because we're just approving them tonight as part of the resolution that's required to be attached so that the board understands the process. That's part of what this item is. And then basically, we will bring them back in final form for your final approval.
And that's all in the resolution, correct?
It's all in the resolution. So with that, Executive Director Delena will come forward and discuss the process a little bit more.
All right, I have a question before we do that. Trustee Prendergast.
Just a procedural thing to make sure we're doing this right. In the past on these kinds of things, we've had to adjourn and then do a public hearing? Is that not necessary in this case?
No. Tonight is just the resolution, but we thought because it's so technical and it's such a large piece of your packet, Brandy's gonna do just a very brief PowerPoint presentation to overview, to sort of get into what the process, plus it's been a long time since we've discussed lease leaseback, and this is the first time through for everybody.
Okay. Brandy, go ahead.
Thank you. So back in February 28th, 2011, at the Board of Trustees Meeting, our legal counsel presented the slides that you're going to see tonight for the first time, introducing you to the lease leaseback delivery method. At that time, the board approved the use of the delivery method on future projects. Then on October 20th, 2012, the Board of Trustees approved the first of three steps. And that was the approval of the pre-construction services agreement with CW Driver. Since that time, staff, faculty, administration have all worked really diligently to address the cost issues that you're aware of on that project. And we've performed reviews on the documents and also gone to the Division of the State Architect not once but twice to review these documents. So now we feel like we're ready to move into step two, and that's what tonight is. So it's part two of a three-part phase, and then we'll see you again for part three in a few months. So this month, see if I can make this work right. We have three objectives with this presentation, as Deborah's mentioned. In accordance with the ed code, we're requesting that you authorize the resolution for this, in this package, that will permit the use of our lease leaseback documents. And also, we're asking you to allow us to move forward with the validation action. And then we're going to provide you a summary of the timeline, what you can expect in this So there are three agreements that must, must be executed with a contractor to move forward into this next part of the lease leaseback delivery method. The site lease, the sublease, and the construction services agreement. We are requesting that these agreements be approved tonight as to form, so that we can execute them and then return them to the board in their final format. In the first agreement, we agreed to lease the project site to the builder for $1 per year. Please note that if for any reason this project does not move forward or is discontinued, the property that is leased through this agreement will be returned to us immediately. So it's completely related to the fact that we're building this project. In the sublease, this is the second of the three agreements that we're discussing tonight, we will set the guaranteed maximum price for the work to be completed by the contractor. This agreement also identifies the monthly payments that will be made to the contractor over the period of the construction, and it'll be very similar to what we've seen in the past related to construction progress payments. And that'll be paid over the life of the construction duration. And when the last payment is complete, as I mentioned, the title to the property will revert back to the district. And also, the title to the new sciences building will become, it will become the district sciences building. And we will no longer be in a lease situation when construction is complete. Finally, the third agreement is called the construction services agreement. This describes the rules of construction. Every delivery method we ever use has the rules of construction. Typically, they're called general conditions in the design, bid, build, delivery method. In this delivery method, they're called the construction services agreement. All construction projects, regardless of the delivery method, as I mentioned, have these agreements as part of the legal requirements for construction. And now I'd like to move into the second part of tonight's request for approval on the resolution, and that's the validation act. In addition to authorizing the use of these contracts, we're asking you to authorize that we move forward with the validation act. And the name says, pretty much says it all. We'll be filing a suit to ask the courts to validate our use of the lease leaseback delivery method and the documents which compromise or comprise this delivery method. This step permits a specific time for our delivery approach to be challenged, and once it's validated, resolves that this is a legal approach for us to use. This is an option that legal counsel recommends that we take, and it's also a step that's customarily taken in the K through 12 use of lease leaseback. The process will be led by our legal counsel and will be run parallel with our efforts to finalize the guaranteed maximum price. Currently, the documents that are in front of you show an estimated price. That estimated price will become the guaranteed maximum price once our contractor receives all of their bids from the subcontractors. So they go out, they bid the subtrades, they get a total number, and then they come back to us with a final number, which will look very much like the 40 million that you see in your packet tonight. We had estimated the project at 39.5 million. For your packet tonight, we have 40 million in the packet, so that we still have a little bit of play once we get the trades in. We add the numbers together and then we arrive at a total contract value, and that contract value will be the final number in the final contracts next time we talk. And then the third thing that we mentioned we would do tonight is talk about the timeline on the project. Now the timeline that's in front of you right now is meant to demonstrate that there are concurrences in the activities. For bidding the subcontractors, that's item number five. And while we're going through the validation action, that's item number nine. In this way, the validation action can include the approved guaranteed maximum price when it is finalized. It also intends to demonstrate to you that there is a step three, the final approval step, in this process, which shows up in item 11. The next time we come to you for approval, it will be for approval for all three of the agreements in their final versions, including this guaranteed maximum price, and to request staff to provide to the, and we're also going to request that staff's able to provide to the contractor, the notice to proceed into construction after the validation action is complete. Our current timeline indicates staff will bring this request to you in June. Now I'm available for any questions you might have on the process, or on the forms, or on the, whatever.
Okay. Trustee Wright. Did you have a question, trustee Wright?
Well, again, I'm told that, I just had a concern as I was reading through it, it said life sciences and it is the sciences building.
It is the sciences building. There's a few draft, this is in draft format, and there are a few things that need to be taken care of, such as that. So next time you see it, it will say sciences building.
Trustee Prendergast.
Just clarification on that. 40 million, you know, it's just $40 million. Is there, like, does that mean there's no way you can go over that? And so that's part of the negotiation with the contractors, is this is my ceiling, so you've gotta come under it? Or would that maybe kill the deal if they needed to go to 41?
Correction. In the action item, it says 43,200.
Yes. And let me clarify what the discrepancy there is. The 40 million is what we expect the subtrades to come in at on their bids. And the, there's 2 million, mm, I believe, yes, it's 2 million for contingency. Now, what's really interesting about that 2 million is that it's a 5% contingency. In the design, bid, build arena, when we've set contingencies aside on projects, we've set 10% aside because there is an expectation that there are going to be a lot of changes, problems with the plans and so forth. With the lease leaseback delivery method, we can drop that back to 5% because we've been working with a contractor, who's here, by the way, why I'm looking in the audience. We've been working with a contractor for the last three months to ensure that the documents are tight for the subcontract bid. It will reduce the changes, but it won't make them go away completely. That's why the 5% contingency. We'll have unforeseen circumstances. We're building this building right next to a power plant, and there's gonna be stuff underground we don't know about as hard as we try to know about them. So that's the 2 million. And then we have a district allowance. As we proceed through projects, we discover that we would have been better off if we had thought about the project this way, and we make a little change to the project to make it better accommodate our programming needs. That's the 1.2 million. So that's the 43.2 that you see, the difference between the 40 that I'm talking about with the subtrades.
Trustee Lang.
Yes, I take it that the documents that we're seeing before us will be a template for any future documents that we would see using this lease leaseback construction delivery method, and that I suspect that this is not something that perhaps we had to develop all on our own, but have kind of borrowed from other areas that have used this method in the past.
Correct. You heard me mention earlier that the practice for K through 12s is to do the validation action. And really, the primary use of lease leaseback has lived in the K through 12 world and is just now crossing into the community college world. There is a public contract code that permits this, which is why we're able to do it. And yes, all of these documents that we're using have been developed by legal and used by numerous districts.
Thank you. Trustee Prendergast.
I'd like to move approval.
Second. Second by trustee Mel Checker. All right. And seeing no other comments, let's vote. Carries unanimously. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Really looking forward to this.
Very good. All right. Now, before we go to our two discussion items that I'm sure are gonna be fascinating, and in view of the late hour, I'm gonna ask that we do, presidential privilege, do the consent calendar first. Now, keep in mind that we have pulled 5.11 off the consent calendar. So do I hear a motion to approve the consent calendar? Trustee Lang, trustee Mel Checker seconded it. Any, anyone wanting to pull anything else off the consent calendar? Okay, we are not going to vote on 5.11. It's pulled, period. So let's vote on the consent calendar, with the exception of 5.11. Trustee Wright? Carries unanimously. We are now at our two discussion items. All right. And the first one is Saddleback College, Irvine Valley College Student Success Task Force Recommendation 5, Improve the Education of Basic Skills Students.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Schmider. This time I'm president of the Academic Senate. At Irvine Valley College, of course. And I'd just like to introduce, we have a group of people from both colleges to discuss Student Success Task Force Recommendation 5.O, improving the basics, improve the basic education, try that again, improve the education of basic skills students. And we have with us from Saddleback, Donna Rain.
You don't say.
Show stick. I said Donna. Donna, I got right.
Yes.
Okay. And from Irvine Valley College, Summer Surplus and Kathy Worley. So again, we're being cooperative and collaborative between the two colleges and also between administration and faculty. So that's my point, and I'll let my colleagues tell you all the rest.
Okay, so I'll be reading the recommendations. Recommendation 5.1, the state should support the development of alternative basic skills curricula, incentivize colleges to take, or to scale successful model programs for delivering basic skills instruction, develop a comprehensive strategy that results in a unified system that provides access to basic skills courses in mathematics and English, and develop a comparable strategy for addressing the needs of adults for courses in English as a second language. And I'm here today to speak about a program that I'm involved with at IVC, which is the Accelerated Writing Project. I'm the team leader. We're working with 3CSN, which is the California Community College Success Network, and I'm a part of their California Acceleration Project, which is a community of practice of faculty in math and English from across the state who are piloting accelerated courses in math and English. So IVC is one of 19 colleges that is piloting the English program right now. And our course takes our two pre-college writing classes, which are writing 301 and writing 201, and fuses them into a one semester class that gets students from two levels below, college level writing to college level writing in one semester. And in order to do that, there's a different teaching method involved, which is teaching college level assignments at the pre-college level with added support. So we're giving them college level reading and college level writing assignments from the very beginning and then adding in support for their writing and adding in support for some of the affective issues such as fear and anxiety that often plague students in the pre-college courses. This is based on the work of the California Acceleration Project, which is run by Dr. Katie Hearn, who is from Chabot College. They've been running a similar program for over 10 years, and they have looked at data that shows that by eliminating exit points, which is defined as enrolling in a class and passing a class, anytime you eliminate exit points, students move more quickly through the system because we remove spots where they can slip out and not get through to the college level writing class. So we have our very early data. We ran two sections of this in the fall, and we had a pass rate of 72.5%. So that means that those students that started in our class all tested two levels b-. below college writing and 72.5% of them were ready for writing one in one semester. Compared to our traditional two semester track, we have the data from fall 2009 to fall 2011 and that pass rate was 56.8%. So, it's a small data set, but that is from our pilot program. We're currently running two more sections this semester and we'll be expanding to five sections next academic year. These students that are enrolled in, that were enrolled in EXP 389 last semester are currently enrolled in writing one, most of them, and we'll be looking at how they perform in writing one. The study out of Chabot shows that the students who did the accelerated track performed slightly better at about a 2% to a 7% rate when they arrive in writing one and they got there faster. I have a short video. This video is featured on the California Acceleration Project website and it's a video of my students speaking about their experience in the accelerated class and I'll just show a few minutes of that. Why did you choose to take the class?
I chose it because I know for the fact that I was way down, down at the bottom of the pit and I thought to myself, man, I can't find a way to get, to get out of this situation at a faster pace until I see, oh, here's an opportunity that...
Okay, Charlie, how do you feel about having an accelerated course like the one you're taking?
I feel that it's a privilege because if you pass this class, you'll be able to get to writing one, which saves you time.
How do you feel about having an accelerated course like the one you're taking?
I feel like excited because it's a good chance for me to like skip the 201 instead of like the whole year. And I can learn a lot, a lot of stuff in one semester and I really want to do that because I believe that I can do this.
How do you feel about the reading and the workload? So, the rest of that video is on the California Acceleration website as well as a video from my colleague Carrie Goulding, who's teaching the other section.
Thank you.
And I'm very pleased to share with you, one of the alternatives the colleges are using as an alternative to traditional basic skills preparation. This one relates to allied health programs. And this Health Career Readiness Program dubbed the Fast Track to Success was funded by the California Community College Chancellor's Office and was deemed sufficiently innovative that it has become part of the White House President's Jobs Council Agenda. So, I'd like to share just a little, and again, keep in mind, this is only one approach. There are many others that are going on out there. It was very clear to allied health faculty that the students coming in particularly to allied health programs that didn't have prerequisites, that they were coming in really unprepared in the basic skills. And students who otherwise would have succeeded in other programs were not doing well. And why? First of all, they found themselves in a world of mathematics totally foreign to them because we use the metric system. We use calculations and conversions all the time and again, in systems they're not used to. And even for the high school students, many of them hadn't done fractions and decimals for a long time and for the adults coming in to kind of retool, hadn't done it in years. So, they were behind the eight ball in math and then in terms of communication, which we usually typically call reading, writing, et cetera, they found themselves in a foreign language because medical terminology is a whole other world. And then there was the challenge of reading a typical allied health textbook. And this is just an average sized book. And if you haven't really been schooled in how to approach a book like this, it's a daunting task. How do you pull out critical content? How do you take notes that are going to be meaningful? So, that was the challenge for our reading faculty. And, and what they did with the students was amazing. And then we had another interesting piece that was an aside, but really worked well, which is just the whole world of health career options. These students often watched ER and knew that nursing and medicine were the only two things, when in fact, there's a whole world out there. And often, they'd get halfway through a program and say, oh, this isn't what I want to do. So, we thought that as we were doing these basic skills and getting them retooled, we'd also expose them to what kind of options there might be in the world of healthcare. And interestingly, we found some folks who said, well, I never knew about that. And one of them, at least currently, is in a program and loving every minute of it and it wasn't anything she thought she'd ever want to do. So, the first challenge we faced, we knew there were problems, but the first challenge was this huge gap. We had the basic skill experts who knew what to do with math and reading, but were unfamiliar with allied health. They didn't know the context which in with students had to work. On the other hand, the allied health faculty who knew the context very well, didn't know how to help people develop their basic skills. So, we brought them together. And we brought the reading and math people over here into this building, the Health Science Building. We had them experience the classes. We had them work with the textbooks. And they learned that world and said, oh, my goodness, we've been doing the wrong things. And that team that we created of faculty experts was led primarily by Dr. Hensel and Chu from allied health, Irene Manalt and Cheryl Altman from reading and composition, and Larry Perez and Patrick Quigley from math. And it was one of the most exciting things to see these three disciplines come together. So, they met that challenge, they identified what needed to be done. We said, okay, now we know the content, we know the approach, let's just find the textbook and implement it. And it turned out, that textbook didn't exist. So, what they did is worked with one of the major healthcare publishers to actually compile a textbook. Klipp and Cott is one of the big publishers. And they worked with them and pulled pieces from several textbooks, put them into one and we said, now, we're delighted to work with you and do this, but there's one rule. It cannot cost more than $50. And if you've ever looked at a healthcare textbook, you know that the first, it's always in three digits and the first number is rarely one. And this book was, they brought it in at $48. So, we were very excited about that. And with that, these faculty who now were familiar with healthcare contextualize all of the learning. It was all done within the environment of healthcare. The students were put into learning communities. Everything was scenario based. It was within the context of something going on in healthcare. And we supplied and our folks developed some online reinforcement for when these students were home. So, I wanted to show you a very quick, just a few seconds, about 30 seconds, of how their classrooms looked, which was a mixture of didactic and experience.
You ever play Twister? When you get in those weird spots? Sometimes you might have to move around so that you can...
So, the students had the opportunity, one day was a didactic day, sharing both math and reading, and the next day, they'd apply what they learned in the context of healthcare. And each time, a different discipline was highlighted. So, that was kind of a delightful experience as well as reinforcement. To make sure they really retain things, our faculty who were amazing, developed some interactive exercises and this used a technique, it was our math faculty who did this, and we were just floored.
Hi, this is Professor Perez.
This was online.
On this document, we will perform a dosage calculation using three different techniques. We will use the proportion method, dimensional analysis, and the formula method. Problem: Calculate the amount of amoxicillin to administer. Here, the ordered dosage is amoxicillin, 450 milligrams to be given orally every eight hours. Our dosage strength is 400 milligrams per 5 milliliters. Note: The dose on hand is in the same units as the dose ordered. Therefore, no conversion is required.
And that's just a piece of what they did prior to our getting the faculty together. They couldn't have done it because they had no idea what conversions were in, in healthcare. So, that was another very, very exciting piece of this project. And then, they continued to work on textbook versions. So, we had the online, we had the class, and then we had textbook pages that looked like this, that worked with the metric system. And so, there was really no reason for the students not to be aware of what was happening. And what we did was, we started a pilot last summer. There were only, the target population were high school grads getting ready to enter college in the fall. We were hoping they'd come to Saddleback. And we did a two-week immersion, alternating, as I said, a didactic with experiential. We did pre and post-assessment in reading, in math, et cetera. And many of the, the reading assessments were more qualitative, so I wanted to share with you in this brief time that we have, quantitative outcome from pre and post-assessment in math. And this represents eight of the 14 students who went through the program. These were high school grads and so the very last day, six of them didn't show up of the 14. So, we only have eight that did both pre and post. Those results are pretty astounding. The blue represents their pre-skill. And these were, by the way, things that all the students thought they knew how to do, that they didn't know how to do. The red line, thankfully, represents the post-assessment. But what's really dramatic about this is that while the pre-assessment math questions were very basic and only looked at one aspect at a time, the post-assessment combined basic math problems with complex ones, combining several skills. The mean average before was 38.4%, the mean average after 75.3%. We have thankfully been funded for another year. We're going to do that summer program again. We're going to expand it to adult learners and really refine that curriculum, take it to the ROPs as well.
And then wrapping it up, most of you are familiar with the history of basic skills funding. It came as an initiative to help us improve our report accountability outcomes for students. We started out with a massive survey of the literature that the RP group and others did and they came up with a document called a poppy copy that weighed too much to carry to this building this evening. And based on some of the information in that document, each college has launched, launched an initiative and implemented a variety of programs. Both colleges have invested significantly in tutoring. We're doing things like developing short videos that can be used in classes. The funding is only used for students in basic, basic skills courses or those who lack the college level skills to succeed. One of the issues we run into though, is that many of our courses are college level, but don't require any prerequisite or assessment. So, the students come in unprepared and we've come up with ways to try to work with those students, college success skills. We have Robert Melendez in the audience, who's the author of one of those programs. We've worked to identify the best practices that are available throughout the colleges. And one of those ways was to have joint student success summits. We've held two now utilizing faculty from both campuses, one at Saddleback College, one at IVC. I don't want to spend a lot of time on professional development. That will be the topic of our next student success presentation. But some of the strategies we've come up with, ways that we might be able to help students get through more quickly, also include utilizing the MOOCs, the massive online, massive open online courses as a way of preparing students for assessment. If we can get them to test into a higher level course, that will shorten their time in basic skills developmental courses, reducing cost. We're developing free online assessment preparation materials. We're talking about possibly doing fee-based community education preparation for some of these assessments. We're looking at a variety of strategies, but just recognize that each idea we come up with does have both, you know, pros and cons that have to be considered. An example, in providing access for students, we could conceivably change some of our very low-level courses in basic skills development to non-credit. Now, the pluses are that it would be free for students, they don't have to pay for non-credit courses. Currently, they're allowed to repeat, whereas in our current scenario, we have strict limitations that have been imposed and they're about to get stricter. It could improve our college reporting scores. When we look at ARC 2, students would possibly get through much more quickly. The trade-off though, is that the funding for the state, the apportionment level for non-credit courses is about 60% of what we're currently getting for credit courses. So, we're expecting policy changes. One of the things they're promising is that the funding is going to change. It'll no longer be butts in seats at census, but rather butts in seats at the end of the semester, which could make a significant difference for many programs and courses. They're talking about adult education being moved to the California Community Colleges from the K-12 where it primarily resides now. Most of these things are far off in the future. We don't know for sure if they'll happen, but we have to be following the things that are being recommended in Sacramento and kind of weighing in on what we think will and won't work. We do anticipate that there will be mandates or restrictions on how we use our BSI funding going forward. Up to now, it's been pretty open and the colleges had considerable autonomy, but I think they're going to get more prescriptive in the next funding cycle. With that, we'll end our presentation and thank you for your attention. We know it's been a long evening. Are there any questions that anyone has?
I actually don't have a question. I get to be, I have the honor and privilege of being the guy who gets to make the motion to extend the meeting to 9:45. So moved.
Shall we all second that motion and vote on it? Okay. All right. Let's just do, everyone in favor?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, good. Thank you very much. Our next discussion item?
Now there are questions.
Oh, have there been questions? Quick questions?
Very quick. Thank you. Excellent report. On the health readiness section, my question is, where is the experiential element taking place?
Currently, the experiential element is taking place here on campus and it's in the laboratories that are here, primarily with, actually with simulators for the hands-on tasks. We also used, one day was a laboratory day. They drew bloods for phlebotomy in the morning, not real, but from our fake arms. And in the afternoon, they ran tests on them. So, that was their lab day. They had another day that was health information technology that they spent in the computer lab with electronic health records and a day where they did vital signs and, and had to gown for infection control. And it was really about always bringing in what they had done the day before in their didactic class. They had a great time.
Thank you. All right, we'll go on to our next discussion item, please. Mental health services at the two campuses. We'll start with, who's up first, Irvine Valley or Saddleback? Three campuses?
It's a solid one.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Go ahead. Go ahead. Introduce yourself, please.
Good evening. I'm Linda Fontanella, the Vice President of Student Services for Irvine Valley College. Thank you for allowing us to come this evening and speak to you about our students with mental health issues. I'm here with my colleagues and as they come up to present their part of the PowerPoint presentation, they'll introduce themselves. We also want to thank trustee Jamal for asking about the question of what services are we providing to our mental health students and our staff. It certainly gave us an opportunity to go back and reflect on some of the things that we have done just recently. It's certainly true that we have a growing number of students who we are dealing with with mental health issues. From, and just talking with Dr. Seepers, from the fall of 2012 to the spring of 2013, we dealt with 33 discipline cases, but within those discipline cases, we had five, up to possibly eight students who were students dealing with mental health issues. Five years ago, I would have seen maybe one student a semester who suffered from mental illness, but now I see students on a regular basis. I'd just like to give you an example of what I've dealt with in the last two weeks. Two weeks ago, Dr. Justice, Dr. Seepers and I dealt with a woman who is at the Irvine campus. She is homeless, she is disruptive in her classes, and she suffers from mental illness. We've received numerous incidence reports on her that range from her sleeping in class and snoring and disrupting the class, to things like not being clean and students and faculty not wanting to deal with her because of her hygiene. We went into a session with this woman two weeks ago and it was really heartbreaking. We talked to her, we tried to offer her various resources to go into housing situations and, and other resources within the county. She is a very intelligent woman. She refused those resources. She does not want to be confined to one house. And she kept telling us that she just wanted a job, but she is not capable of working at the college and holding down a job. She also talked about a phantom person who is in her life, who was causing the people at the college to write incident reports on her. And at night, this gentleman would come and he would pull her eyelashes out. And so, it was very... And so it was very, very heartbreaking to talk to this woman and know that we have offered her several resources at the college level and in the community level, and yet she is not able to receive those resources. And just this week, Dr. Seepers and I and Daryl Cox, the Financial Aid Director, we met with a young gentleman who was upset because he wasn't getting his financial aid on time. He was very agitated. He became very volatile, to the point where I had to end the meeting. And he became very loud and aggressive, and we had to call the policeman on him, only to learn later, because his file was not with us at the time, that he suffers from being bipolar. And now he wants to take his problem on up. But these are the types of issues that we are dealing with on a weekly basis. My team here are the experts, and fortunately for IVC, we have a long history of staff who have been helping our students and our staff who have suffered from mental health issues. And now I'm going to turn it over to my colleague so she can introduce herself and talk about some of the services.
I'm Chris Hogstedt, and I'm the nurse at Irvine Valley College. I'm the Director of the Health and Wellness Center. And I have been there since 1985, so I'm 28 years into this process. So I kind of am the historian, I think, of the group since I've been around the longest and have seen the most change. This slide represents what was going on. We have been keeping statistics in the Health and Wellness Center since 1979. I actually found resources of every single semester, and it keeps track of the mental health issues or anything dealing with mental health, which is rather, it varies from being a little bit stressed because I'm not passing my class to grossly schizophrenic or bipolar or in that category. And anything in between is what I would classify as mental health. So that's quite a range, you know, from what she's talking about to what we're really seeing and dealing with on a regular basis. And in 1979, we were dealing with mental health issues. And when I got there, we were still dealing with mental health issues, and the demand was going up. In 2005, at Irvine Valley College, was the first time that we actually hired a part-time psychologist who was able to supervise an intern the first time, and then we went to two, and then we went to three, and now we're up to four, that actually did therapy and provided free therapy for students on a short-term basis in the Health and Wellness Center. And from 2003 to 2012, the demand for mental health services doubled, and I have that documented in our statistics. So that's just what I could pull out very quickly. Despite increasing need for psychological services, we really haven't changed our staffing except for adding more interns as the resources become available. But our psychologist is only part-time, so therefore, we can't really go too much further with her with regards to what we're doing. In 1979, the sorts of services, and in 85, when I arrived, we were referring to community resources for mental health issues. There was some limited personal counseling available in the Counseling Center itself by personnel who were qualified to do so. Not everyone in the counseling venue was doing counseling at that time or this type of counseling. And we were doing, we're doing and still are doing and have been doing all along, crisis counseling that is done through both the Health and Wellness Center as well as through the Counseling Center. So those are the services that were available in 1979. In 2013, or up to now, we have a part-time psychologist. We do have interns. There is some availability of bilingual counseling, although not as much as is really needed, to be honest with you. And I don't think there will ever be as much as is really needed with regards to that type of counseling. We do have a waiting list year-round for the counseling services that we do have available. We do a tremendous amount of community resource referrals, and it is a long-time job to keep track of the sorts of resources that are available in the community. One of the things I didn't mention about myself is that my initial background is I was a psychiatric nurse. So I have a particular love of this particular subject, and I am truly appalled at the fact that there are such limited resources out in the community for mentally ill or mentally needy people. It is, unless you have insurance and unless you have some resource yourself, this county, well, okay, let me back up. I was working in LA. I'm sorry, I need to tell this. I was working in LA in psychiatric, and I fully intended to be a psychiatric nurse when I moved to Orange County. So I called a friend who was a psychiatrist in Orange County, and I said, "So what's available in Orange County? I'm a psychiatric nurse, I'm ready to go." And he said, "Nothing, don't do it." And he turned me to public health because it was just not here. And it still isn't here, and that was 28 years ago. So I think it's appalling, and I would happily follow any bandwagon that gets this done. But we can do what we can do within the college, but the resources out there are just very, very limited. We, again, still do crisis counseling. And all along, the, a couple of things. The nurses have been visiting classrooms and touting our services, so people are aware that we do have mental health services available. I only read with my glasses off. We also respond to issues in the media that may affect students. As an example, after the Newtown shootings, our psychologists provided written information that was sent to all faculty, staff, and staff about how to deal with the aftermath of a mass shooting. We have staff development. For example, in the spring, we had a staff development activity for faculty and staff on students acting out in the classroom and what you should do. So there's all these activities going on that are preventative and also to inform staff and faculty of what they can do when they encounter folks that have mental health needs. Funding? Well, funding for what we do on campus is through the $18 a semester, $15 a summer session health fee, and that provides the services that are through the Health Center itself, and which I've just kind of talked to you about, and then we'll talk about a little more in the future. This pays for doctors, nurses, and psychologists who supervise the therapists. The general fund pays for counseling services, disciplinary activities, threat assessment activities, and police activities. There also, here, there also is something that I want to make you aware of that is, has just come up in the California Community Colleges. In 2011, I'm going to read it, just so you're aware of it. "The California Community College Chancellor's Office and the Foundation for California Community Colleges received a $6.9 million grant in funding for the California Mental Health Services Authority to support the development of mental health prevention and early intervention services. The funding provides for suicide prevention training for faculty and staff that is provided online by Cognito Interactive, and training and technical assistance on mental health service capacity building provided by the Center for Applied Research Solutions, and a campus-based grant program that supports campus awareness." These funds are available for technical training of staff and faculty. These are things that we intend to take advantage of at Irvine Valley College, and we have been in contact with the folks that are going to help us determine exactly what our needs are for technical training and provide that for us, and this is free of cost. So that comes under the funding aspect as well. I think the next one goes to Liz.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Seepers. I'm the Dean of Counseling Services at Irvine Valley College. I'm also the Discipline Officer, and so I see many of the students that come in through the incident reports, as Dr. Fontanella said. To date, from 2012, we've seen approximately 33 students in a discipline situation, but those are symptoms of other causes oftentimes that we've identified. And some of those cited on the discipline reports that I've received, the incident reports, aggressive behavior, they're confrontational, they're making threats to harm themselves or others, questioning the authority of the instructor in the classroom, sending threatening emails. All of those are warning signs that we take very seriously, act promptly on, which goes right into the next slide.
What you have here is the Mental Health Service Process Chart. So as you can see there, situational, a situation may happen with the student, and either on-campus resources are used, or we use off-campus referrals. And then from there, the counseling resources are administered. What I'd like to also talk about is the protocol of the Health Center, and that is just looking at the psychological counseling that's available. Students self-initiated and referred. As far as the Counseling Center is providing services, we've always been, from the standpoint of holistic counseling, and we've always said that that's the academic part, of course, but also the personal and social is a big part of that. I would say that has, you know, as it's already been alluded to, tripled in the last couple of years. Anything from acute to chronic stressors that are coming in to the students, with the students, to our counseling sessions. You know, sometimes it is stress with the class, other times it's work-related, and being able to have the ability to have enough time to be successful in class. And then I also work with the student veterans at IVC, and there's a lot of other issues that, you know, directly relate with some of the, you know, some of the concerns that they're coming in with. And sometimes a counseling session, in which you would think would be a half-hour, 45 minutes, directly, you know, related to academic counseling, is nothing but that. And it's about crisis management, and it's really about stress management, and just getting them on stable footing to be able to be successful, not even for that week, but for that day, and to move forward with additional resources as needed. My name's Robert Melendez. I'm the Chair of the Counseling Department.
I wanted to back up for a minute and just go over my protocol a little bit. The sorts of things that we do in the Health Center is that we, our protocol generally is to, if someone is presenting to us, they're usually either coming on their own to the Health Center, they've identified a need, they are referred by someone who's used our services before, they are referred by a faculty member, they are walked over by someone who is concerned about them. All of these are ways that they get to the Health and Wellness Center. They are interviewed by a nurse in the beginning. And the reason that we do this before they see a counselor is we need to know if they're in immediate danger and if there's an immediate threat, if there's something that they need to do that we need to do to be sure this person remains safe and other people around us remain safe. We do an intake with each person and ask what their needs are, and then we put them on a list to see our counselors in our Health and Wellness Center, our therapists in the Health and Wellness Center. If this is short-term therapy, just to be sure you understand that, we are not dealing with chronic schizophrenics or bipolars, neither are we abandoning them. If they come to us for counseling, we will see them, we will intake them, we will talk to them, we will find out what their needs are, and the therapist will then directly refer them to individuals in the community that can help them. They will also do follow-up immediately to follow-up, to be sure that these contacts have been made out in the community. The other thing I wanted to mention that hasn't been mentioned yet is that there are some legal mandated laws that we go by, and the main one is called a 5150. And when someone calls a 5150, and it can be really anybody on the campus, it means that you have identified a student or staff who is in immediate danger to themselves, in immediate danger to others, or gravely disabled and unable to care for themselves. One semester at IVC, we had five 5150s, not recently, and it's the most I've ever had in my particular campus. But to do this, you involve the police, you call a group called the, it's a resource team that's in the community. They come in and assess the person is indeed a danger to themselves or others, and they transport them for an involuntary hold of 72 hours to determine whether or not they should be released or further held against their will. That's the only way that anybody with a mental illness can be held against their will in the state of California and probably in the country. So I just did want to bring that in because that is something that is involved with all of the folks here, as well as the Health and Wellness Center, and certainly the police is involved as well. So I just wanted to make that a little more clear.
Just rounding out our presentation, I wanted to address one more issue that Trustee Jamal talked about, and he asked, "And what services do we have for our staff?" Our staff also do, unfortunately, sometimes suffer from mental illnesses, and their behaviors are many of the same behaviors that we see in our students. They have poor attendance, declining work performance, they're confrontational with their peers and with their superiors, they're aggressive in some instances, and in other instances, they're just sad, and we can't figure out what's going on with them. When this is noted, the manager has been trained to be sensitive to these issues, consult with the staff person, address their needs, refer them to our Employee Assistance Program, as well as have conversation and get our Human Resource Staff involved in it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Saddleback.
Good evening. Juan Avalos, Vice President of Student Services at Saddleback College. Saddleback College, in many ways, is no different than IVC, as many ways is no different than other colleges around the state. The increase in mental health issues we see, oftentimes, there's kind of a double-edged reality when it comes to access. And I think as a community college, we take that responsibility on because it is a very important role we play. Sometimes students are healthy enough to come to school, and then as a college, we get to deal with the entire individual, right? Whatever's happening in their personal lives doesn't just stay there, it comes to us as well, which is a key component to making sure that students are successful, in making sure to provide those services. One of the things that is important at Saddleback College, we have a wonderful collaboration between all of the entities that work in this arena, our Counseling Center, our Health Services, our transfer and career and special programs. We have counselors across a number of programs, all who have been trained in a wide array of counseling, all who serve and support students, all who are frontline to student needs. When a student comes in and is having a conversation about what courses they're going to take, oftentimes could lead into some of the other things that are going on in their lives, and the need for support rises. So we have a wonderful, wonderful relationship. I think as an institution, we also recognize that, you know, a lot of these issues are related, right? I mean, we talk about mental health issues, and we talk about alcohol and drug prevention, and we talk about discipline, and we talk about a number of other issues, and there's always some overlap, right? They're not all 100% separate, but there is some, oftentimes, any particular case you deal with comes with a variety of portions of each of these, which makes it for a more complicated process because there are a lot of devastating needs there. And our president, at the beginning of the year, sort of put the call out to address the issue of alcohol and drug prevention, and the college stepped up, and we've moved forward with a committee focused on doing that this fall. There's a number of things we do. The report we submitted was pretty comprehensive in all these areas, so I'm not going to try to replicate all of that. I will sort of hit on a number of the points because they are important. On this list, these are a number of the entryways into how the college identifies, assists, and educates both our faculty and staff when it comes to at-risk students. One of the things I'm most proud of is that we have a lot of places where the needs could be identified, and that's what we want. I mean, in a typical situation, you never know who's going to be the first person to be aware of a concern, so the more people you have, the better. To that point, I want to highlight some of the most recent training that we're a part of. In the previous presentation, it was noted that there's a statewide effort to get some of the technical training out there, one of which is Cognito At-Risk Gatekeeper Training. Saddleback College has already started to do that. We started to do that in December this last year, and there are three modules that are made available. And one of the most fascinating part about this training program, it's an online program, self-paced program, and it is, it uses virtual role-play to help the person being trained to identify ways of assisting students. What they do is, through simulation of conversations, I've done all three, so I know sort of how it works, they give you different scenarios, they paint various pictures, and you begin to think about whether or not a student in a particular case is of concern or not. They guide you through a process where you have a one-on-one conversation with, these are avatars. You have a one-on-one conversation with the person. The one that's for faculty and staff, you know, shows a profile of a class, gives you some general information about what's going on with that student, a brief history of, you know, grades have been going down, has been, you know, class attendance, those kinds of things. And you And you click on it, and it takes you to the one-on-one conver, there's five students this faculty member has an issue with, is concerned about. And what they do, you say, okay, talk to the student. So then it goes to like the equivalent of an office hour kind of setting, where the faculty member's sitting with the student, and they give you some options. It's, okay, how would you like to start the conversation? You get to click one of, one of five different options, and depending on what you click, the avatar student responds based on what you've, what you've utilized. When I first did it, I was trying to, since I was just exploring it, I was kind of curious to see, because they give you some effective and less effective options, so I was kind of curious to see how it worked. So I tried some of the most ineffective options, and, you know, it was interesting because I managed to, in the very first introduction, have the student get upset and said they were out of there, which is kind of interesting because you could, the nice thing about it is it's in a safe environment, you get to identify conversations, feel what's more effective, what's not, and it guides you through a process. In all of these, there's one for faculty, there was one that's focused for students, students in college, so students working with peers, and there's another one for faculty and staff that work with veterans. In each of those cases, you have options of conversations and you have resources that are made available. The nice thing about this particular training, when you go to hit resources, it gives you Saddleback-specific resources on campus and in the local community. And it's really that way that you're going to have multiple pairs of eyes, multiple pairs of ears out there. And to date, we've had 52 people go through the university and college faculty and staff training. We've had 82 people go through the Friends in College version, and we've had 63 people go through the Veterans on Campus version, and we're looking to expand that as another way to get people out there, you know, where the symptoms might be had, and in all of these programs, like geared towards referring to a professional. The other one that I want to address, speak to, is a faculty guide that was developed about two years ago in collaboration with our psychologist in the Health Center and one of our counselors in general counseling. And the guide was, was specifically developed to help faculty how to respond to students who are distressed or threatening. And we've handed these out to faculty, particularly in faculty orientation with brand-new faculty. We do in-services on this. So we've, we've gone a long ways to try to get information out there and strategies and resources, but there's, there's never enough to do. So we're very proud of our guide, and we're very proud of our Cognito participation. As mentioned, we have in-service for faculty, and we've had them for staff. We've sent faculty and staff to some suicide prevention workshops. We have a number of resources, both in the, in our Student Health, Health Center website as well as the counseling website, and we do, you know, the classroom visits as well. Our, our idea is we have to put it in front of people as about as many different times as possible, provide the training in about as many different formats as we can, so that we have folks who are aware of concerns and know where to send those concerns. And I'm going to turn it to my Director of Student Health Center, who will provide some of the other endpoints and treatment options.
Good evening. My name's Jeannie Harris-Caldwell, for those who don't know me, and thank you so much for letting me speak tonight. You know, if I can reiterate what Chris Hodset said, we have 10 mental health beds in the county of Orange. I come from hospital administration, where I've ran hospitals for the last 20 years, and we have our emergency rooms filled with people that are waiting for mental health beds. So it's a huge problem, especially within Orange County. So what we're seeing here at the college is not something to be surprised. We're an open-access campus and district. The students that come here come with a lot of problems and baggage. And so what we have to do as healthcare professionals and as counselors and as our faculty of the college is to look for ways to identify those students and help them the best that we can. And I think the training that we're doing with the IVC and we are doing together, the Cognito, is wonderful. It's more eyes out into our campus, it's a peer-to-peer interaction, it's interaction for our Vet Center, it's interactions for our Health Center. We're very fortunate at Saddleback College. We have a huge Student Health Center following right now. We have two clinical psychologists, I have six physicians, I have eight intern counselors, and five registered nurses. None are full-time, they all work part-time, but I have two part-time psychologists that are there 40 hours a week. Every slot that I have available is filled. We are looking for additional space right now. And just because of the sheer numbers that we're seeing and the increase in mental health across the nation, especially in our college students, some of the things that we see with student misconduct referrals are students that may be in the disciplinary process within Saddleback College, and the Health Center works very closely with these that may be experiencing psychological difficulties. So we, when deemed necessary, when a student's in a discipline issue here, we work with our psychologists through the Health Center and have them meet on a weekly, bi-weekly voluntary basis, but it allows the students an opportunity to work through their disciplinary process, identify their behaviors that are out of line, but at the same time, give them a resource. And we do individual consultations, we do it with faculty members, and they're encouraged to seek consultation from the Student Health Center, from the psychologists, whenever there are psychological or behavioral concerns arise in their classroom. So we do one-on-one with our faculty, come in for individual counseling. We also go out, as Dr. Avalos had mentioned, to the classroom for outreach in order to make sure that people know what services are available within the Health Center. The referrals from instructors to the Crisis Intervention Team happen every day. I know that Chris shared a story with you, and I'll share a really brief story about one of our students last year that we had to put on the 5150. So I am so thankful that she took the time to explain that. The 5150 is a hold that we have to put, the involuntary hold, and it's usually done by a licensed healthcare professional, a medical doctor, a police officer, peace officer. And we took the opportunity last week because we had a very, very sad case with one of our students who was a cutter. And I'm not sure if you know what a cutter is, but it's someone who goes ahead and cuts themselves because they can't feel pain. They're in such a low place in their life, they do it to make themselves feel. And we identified the student was at risk through our counseling service, and they brought them over to the Health Center, and we were able to talk to the student, quietly call, quietly put her on a 5150 to respect her confidentiality, and take her to a hospital. She was held for five days, which is significantly longer than the 72-hour because she was so gravely ill and a danger to herself. She came back and saw us last Tuesday. This story has a really happy ending, and she was seen by a psychologist and a psychiatrist through the health system that she was taken to, and her medications were adjusted and changed, and she's now going to be seeing us on a bi-weekly basis through the Health Center so we can monitor. So part of our role here at the Health Center and part of our role within the college is to identify these at-risk students through various means, and then define the resources, as Chris stated also, we can't see and treat everyone, we don't have the resources. So we have to rely on our county and our community resources to refer to, but we don't let anyone fall through the cracks if we can help it. One of the things that really came to light here at Saddleback College was the amount of drug and alcohol use that we are seeing on this campus. Unfortunately, about 50% of the mental health patients that we see through the Health Center have some type of substance abuse. And with that, I want to show you something that we've done, that I have here, if I can get our mouse to. Okay. Within the Student Health Center, I want to show you, if you have an opportunity, to look at the website. This is the website within our Student Health Center, and you can see all the things that a student can click on as soon as they go to it. One of them is our Drug and Alcohol Program. And if you take a look at this, it goes right to the Drug and Alcohol Program that we launched here on the, that after Dr. Burnett brought to us the need on the college, and we did some investigation and found it to be a very substantial need. We want no one to fight their battles alone. And with that, we have also linked in help for the students. We have their blood alcohol calculator right there. If a student drinks and drives, they can take a look and see how many drinks they can have before they know what, based on their height and weight. We also have a drug assessment screening tool that's here, and it lets you go in confidentially and see what kind of problems you have. Is that, you know, pot that you're smoking a little bit too much? Is it becoming a problem? Is things, are alcohol drinks coming? So we've really tried to launch a program that's successful. And part of that is we're also bringing onto our campus a Smart Recovery Program, which is an intervention for alcohol that is not a 12-step, it's based on the 12-step, but it's not, doesn't have the, the type of alcohol anomalous, excuse me, structure, and we're also bringing on the 12-step AA program, so we can reach all of the students, those that are faith-based, those that are not, so that we can offer more resources here on our campus for some of the mental health issues that we're seeing with substance abuse and alcohol. Additionally, if you go back to the webpage, we have a complete webpage on mental health services, and this is up and running, and it tells you what to do. It tells you what to do if there's a danger in your class, it tells you what to do, when to call the police. It goes through, all of these are links for crisis intervention, signs, and the faculty guide that we're passing through, those are our links for that, identifying students that have need, our Cognito training, again, the drug and alcohol, and then how to make a medical or psychological appointment for our students. So part of the presentation tonight that I had hoped to share with you was this webpage that we already have available for our college. So for going on to measures to treat at risk, let me go back. I'm sorry. Thank you. So I talked to you about, a little bit about the webpages and the resources there. Not, not to discount anything that the general counseling, they also have an incredible website, and also transfer special programs. So I wanted to share that with you. And then some of the other things that are not so great, that we still utilize, that, you know, aren't as big as a bang as the, the webpages and some of the online resources, are the Crisis Intervention Brochures that are available, that we give out, we, again, take these out to our classes. Some of the Stress and Depression Brochures that I wanted to share with you, Anxiety and Suicide. And then lastly, the Student Health Center and the Counseling Center faculty have a long history of working collaboratively, and I think that it's important for you to know, which you probably already do, this Crisis Intervention Team has been around here since the 1980s. And as the occurrences are becoming more regular, we're looking at additional resources all the time that we can provide for our students. So at this time, if you have any questions at all, I'd be happy to answer them.
Chris, can I address?
Again, not a question. I'm making a motion to extend the meeting another 35 minutes with the caveat, it is not for the next one item, it is for the remaining of the meeting.
It looks like Trustee Jamal has, well, I'll second the, or someone's second motion. We'll vote on the motion, please. Second, I trust, I'll check her. Let's vote on the motion. I'll just, just by hand. All right. Carries. Right. All right, carries. So, Trustee Jamal, you have a question?
I'll be short. I know the hour is late, and I, this is such an important subject, and thank you for being here tonight. You know, dealing with issues of psychological, psychological distress are, it's very challenging. I understand that. I think the last thing we want to see as a board is an act of violence that causes harm to our students, to our staff, or to members of the community. And I think that's, that's what we seek to avoid here. I will hold an abeyance to a number of questions that I had, but two that I had, if you could address. One, how many faculty and staff have received the training? Do we know those numbers? And second, it appears that there are two different systems, one for Saddleback and one for IVC. You know, you have the Cognito. I don't know if that's also in place at IVC, and if you could just address that.
It's placed, but it is in progress. We're in the process of adopting it. It's a very good program.
And we just went live in December of this year, so they're right behind us, they're right there. So yes, it is, it was just made available, the funds were. Currently, at Saddleback, we have had 52 people trained for the University and Faculty Guide Module. We've had 87 people complete the Friends in the College, which is the peer-to-peer, so the students to one another, recognizing signs and walking them over to a Health Center. And then we've had 63 people complete the Veterans Module, which is a completely different type of mental health illnesses that we see on our veterans who are returning with post-traumatic stress disorders, and then re-entry into the community college life.
Thank you. I thought you, it was a very good report, and I think we have a good structure in place. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We're at 6.2, action item. That is the Marian Bergerson Award nomination. Do I have any board members who would like to be nominated or would like to make a nomination? Seeing none? No. I decline. No.
Okay.
No? Anyone else? Okay. All right, we will go to 6.3, Board Policy Revision, Local Law Enforcement, Except for Review and Study. It's okay, moved and seconded. Let's vote on the item. Carries unanimously. We are now moving 6.6 ahead of 6.4 at the request of management. So 6.6 is Irvine Valley College Management Reorganization.
Yes, thank you very much, President Pedberg. As Trustee Jay noted, we're recommending tonight a little bit of a reorganization. It's primarily driven by a couple of changes that we've had. One is our Director of Extended Education transferred to here at Saddleback, and also we have our Dean of Online Education and Learning Services who will be retiring. So that has provided an opportunity to do a little bit of consolidation. And first of all, we will have, the library will be added back to the Dean of Liberal Arts. She had the library at one point and didn't have it for a while, and now has actually suggested that she wants to have it back. So that, that fit in perfectly for that. We will also then be moving the duties that were held by the Director will be moved under the Dean of Academic Programs. And so all total, when we look at hiring a new Dean of Online and Extended Education, combined with the fact that we're going to eliminate a position, it does lead to significant savings overall. So it will help with our ratio. We are challenged with attempting to move our ratio, total salary to total budget, down to around 88 or 86 if we can. We're around 90 right now, so this will go a long way to help with that objective.
Do I hear a motion? Second. Okay, moved and seconded. So let's vote on the item. Carries unanimously. We're now at 6.4, and that is Academic Personnel Actions.
No changes.
No changes.
Move approval.
Moved by Trustee Melchecker, seconded by Trustee Lang. Let's vote on the item. Carries unanimously, and we are at 6.5. There's an addendum to that, that everyone got, 6.5.
No changes.
Yes.
No changes.
No changes? Okay. So, so moved by Trustee Wright, seconded by Trustee Lang, and seeing no comments, let's vote on the item. Trustee Jamal and Trustee Melchecker, you haven't voted?
Yes.
Yes, I have.
Okay, carries unanimously. So we are, let me see, I'm a little bit lost. Did we do 6.5?
Seven.
6.5, I think. Did we? We did just 6, all right, 6.7, sorry. 6.7, this is the Annual Report of First-Year Probationary Faculty Recommended for Continuation, moved by Trustee Lang.
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Jay. Questions, comments?
Just so the board knows, this is the first time you've seen the item presented this format.
Yes.
Previously, you've seen all the tenure-track faculty lumped into one item, and to be honest about it, tenure is a very confusing issue. It's a four-year process with three contracts. So when the board hires somebody, they have a one-year contract, and then these people have finished their first year, so right now, the board is about to vote to authorize them to get another one-year them to get another one-year contract. The people on the next item, the board's going to vote on that, and if you authorize it, you're going to give them a two-year contract. Now, now what happens then is that the next item is an information item, 7.2, because those people are in the middle of a two-year contract, so the board is not going to vote to authorize to renew them, but you're just, but I want to make sure you know what's going on. So that's what that item's for. And then the very last item is faculty being recommended for tenure. So, so you'll see, I'm just trying to make it easier to understand the process, you can see the pathway they're going through. Between all the different tenure-track faculty right now, there's a total 96 tenure-track committees meeting with a dean and two faculty members on it, reviewing tenure-track faculty. So, so trying to break that down intelligently, and trying to do that for you, so hopefully this is easier.
Okay, I think we got it. So we're at 6.7.
Yes.
Do you hear a motion?
Yes.
Oh, it's been moved and seconded. All right, so let's vote, sorry. Carries unanimously. Now, at 6.8, which is the second-year probationary, moved by trustee Lang.
Seconded.
Seconded by everybody. Trustee Wright, I'll give it to you. All right, let's vote. Any comments or questions? Let's, no changes, let's vote on the item. Carries unanimously.
The, the next item, Madam President, is, is really 7.2. If you want to flip, like, put your finger here and flip to 7.2, that's, that's, that's the number that I told you.
That's a report, yes.
Yes, just an information item.
All right, so as everyone knows, they can go there if they want to have more information about it. But it is action item 6.9, Annual Report for Fourth-Year Probationary Recommend for Tenure.
I need to make an amendment to that.
Yes. Moved by trustee Lang.
Yes. That would be Amy Grimm and Susan Bodinger.
Right.
Would be added to that, well, as an exhibit A.
Okay, so that is a motion. Do you hear a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Jamal. Let's vote on the item. Carries unanimously. So now we are at 6.10, Faculty Hiring Correction. Want to tell us about that?
I would, but I'll defer to President Burnett.
Okay, very good. Okay.
Next to you.
Moved by trustee Jay.
Trustee Jay.
Nursing replacement. Do I hear a second? Seconded by trustee Jamal.
6.10.
I guess.
This is hiring another tenure-track faculty, they're adding this to their priority list for, for Saddleback College.
Yeah, which one is it?
At 6.10, it's the nursing.
Thank you. Now I know what it is. Yes, I'm sorry, another 6.10. Do I get what you're saying?
Anyway, due to, actually accreditation issues for our nursing program and some retirements we had in sabbaticals, actually, in a nutshell, we just need to hire another full-time faculty in nursing. That's why we're coming for you tonight.
Okay, so I think we got it, we've got a motion, let's vote on the item. Carries unanimously. 6.11, so Board of Governors, 2013 Classified Employee of the Year Award. Moved. Moved and seconded by trustee Jay. All right, let's vote on the item. Carries unanimously. We are now at reports, so we will start with.
Acceptance of all the information.
All right, all the information items. Anyone want to pull one off and talk about it? Okay. That's not really an action, but I think we'll all agree to that. And view of the hour, we'll agree to that. So we're now at reports from administration and governance groups. We'll start with Saddleback College Academic Senate, Paula Jacobs. No, what? I'm sorry. Bob Cosgrove? Okay, I'm just reading, I'm reading the order, but you're not sitting in that order, so you want to start, Paula Jacobs, and you are. I got you all mixed up. Faculty Association, go ahead.
Okay. The Faculty Association is preparing for negotiations. That process will begin spring of 2014, so we're now in the process of forming our negotiating team. We are certainly anticipating a better negotiating climate this time around, since Prop 30 has passed and the economy is, seems to be improving.
Good. Now we'll go to Faculty Association. Bob Cosgrove.
No, Academic Senate.
I'm sorry, all right.
I'll be glad to speak on behalf of the Association.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I have one very serious concern that I will express to you in writing, if we don't get some resolution to our curriculum issues at Saddleback College, and it also, I think, has some spillover effect at our sister institution. One of the things that our sister institution has initiated and we are following up on is the waitlist for students. So students who are registering for classes and they can't get into a particular section or a particular course because of the numbers of students, particularly in math and English. We're trying to develop at the behest of our colleague to my right, a waitlist. We used to have waitlists here. They don't apply to all departments and all divisions or schools necessarily. There are some options that teachers can have, but Carla Westfall in the math department has undertaken the committee charge to bring a group of people together, to solicit information about this, and how to best serve again the needs of students, so that their success at the college can be completed rapidly and efficiently.
Okay. And IVC's Academic Senate, Kathy Spindler.
I'll be very brief. We are, the two colleges are working together, the two senators are working together on waitlists, and I think very successfully also on a host of board policy and, and administrative reg, mostly revisions and occasionally rewriting. We have some interesting ones, I hope, coming forward, but they're not ready for prime time yet. And I want to thank the board for their actions this evening, and their very, their thoughtful actions this evening. Thank you.
Very good. And our Associate Vice Chancellor of Economic Development.
Oh, thank you, I won't do a report tonight.
All right, and we can skip the two presidents and then go over to Bob Romucci, Vice Chancellor of Technology and Learning.
The hour, no report this evening.
All right, very good. Vice Chancellor of Human Resources, David Bage.
Brief report, faculty hiring season is on its way. We had our first group of courageous faculty to start the I-Hired process, where they're doing everything on an iPad to hire, so it'd be kind of fun. We'll see what happens to them, if they're still saying, by the time we're done.
Okay. Vice Chancellor of Business Services.
No report.
All right, and then we move to Irvine Valley College at Classified Senate.
Thank you. Just two quick things. One, I wanted to thank you, the board, for endorsing Angela Mahaney as the Classified Employee of the Year Award. Thank you very much for doing that, I appreciate it. Secondly, I just wanted you to be aware that on March 20th, we're having our District-Wide Classified Senate Staff Development Day out of Oak Park. We're doing fantastic team building. One of the things we're going to do is build 15 bicycles that are going to be donated to various charities, so once again, we appreciate it. Thank you, Chancellor, for approving that. Appreciate it.
And our Calhoun School Employee Association, report, President.
Thank you, President Pedberg. Member trustees, my name is Scott Ferguson-Green. I'm the first Vice President of CSEA Chapter 586, and I'm filling in for our Chapter President, Russ Hamilton, Sr. The only item that I wish to report is that over the next few months, we're going to be selecting our delegates to the CSEA Conference, which is coming up at the end of July, beginning of August. Thank you.
Okay, and next we have the.
Donna Minio, Classified Senate, Saddleback College. No report, just due to time.
Okay.
They covered it.
All right. So, and you are from Sal, I can't read it, Saddleback.
Saddleback, Assistant Student Government.
Great.
I just wanted to say that we're in the process of planning our Multicultural Week, Awareness Week, and Earth Week, and also that we were able to participate in the Cognito training that Dr. Avalos and Jeannie mentioned in their presentation, and we all found it collectively to be a very helpful tool. So I just wanted to comment on that.
Great, and I'm going to now ask trustee Wright to make an announcement.
I, I would like to recommend that we adjourn in honor of a student at Saddleback College. His name is James Fueholich. He was a Marine veteran, a father of a three-year-old, he passed away on February the 11th.
All right, with that, we are adjourned.